The Suffolk Planning Commission to order a call on Commissioner Hicks to give us the invocation.
We thank you for continuing to keep us in your care. We ask that you would forgive us our many missteps and give us a mind to do better. We are humbled that you have kept us safe and healthy in spite of this massive pandemic, and that you have protected those on the front lines who are desperately working to keep us alive, and we pray for the families of those who've lost loved ones. Give us, Lord, the discernment necessary to get through this time in our lives. We ask also that you continue to wrap your arms around the many men and women in uniform who protect us daily, both here and abroad. God, we count it a privilege that we can come together to do your, do our little part in maintaining and promulgating and in enhancing the lives and lifestyles of the citizens of this great city. Give us the wisdom we need to do your work in your way. Continue to bless us and keep us in your care. We love you and we thank you for all that you have done and for all these many blessings. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Ben, thanks, Commissioner Hicks. Mr. Goomis, will you call the row, please?
Commissioner Creakmore. Commissioner Eberwine. Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Hicks. Commissioner Rector. Chairman Singleton. Commissioner Staylor. Have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Goomis. Are there any corrections to the minutes from the July meeting? I know they were lengthy. Do we have any changes or anything to be corrected? If not, they were staying approved as presented. We have an item on our agenda today, the public hearing. It's a family transfer subdivision plat request, FTR 2021-00003. Mr. Goomis, will you read the caption, please?
Family transfer subdivision plat request, FTR 2021-003, submit my Courtney Ruckruck applicant on behalf of Shirley B. Claggs, property owner, requesting a family transfer subdivision pursuant to Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance to approve family transfer subdivision plat to create one new parcel and associated right-of-way on property located on 578 Babtown Road, zoning map 55, parcel 31A. The affected property is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the Rural Agricultural Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision for property located at 758 Babtown Road, FTR 2021-0003. And Brittany Collier, Ms. Chairman, will provide the staff report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This family transfer was submitted by Courtney Ruckruck on behalf of Shirley Claggs to request to subdivide one new parcel for her granddaughter, Courtney Ruckruck, and her husband Dustin Ruckruck pursuant to Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The subject property is located in the Rural Agricultural Use District and is designated, as designated by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Ms. Claggs owns the subject parcel depicted above, which is on, located on the northern side of Babtown Road and is currently comprised of 24.66 acres. The proposed parcel for Ms. Claggs's granddaughter and her husband will be 2.4 acres in size, which is depicted in yellow, while Ms. Claggs would retain 22.26 acres of the parent parcel. The surrounding area is zoned agricultural, which consists of single-family dwellings, fields, and forested lands. Robert Claggs and Shirley Claggs received the subject parcel in 1997 from William Claggs, and in 2018, a last will and testament for William's claim conveyed the property solely to Shirley Claggs. Additionally, Courtney and Dustin Ruckruck have not previously received a family transfer parcel, thereby making them eligible for this request. As previously stated, the proposed parcel will be 2.4 acres in size, while the parent parcel will retain an acreage of 22.26 acres. The lot dimensions and building setback lines for the proposed new lot are consistent with the underlying agricultural zoning district. The proposed parcel does not front along any public right-of-way, therefore, a 50-foot ingress/egress easement has been provided to establish access from Babtown Road to the proposed parcel. There is adequate area on the proposed parcel for separate dwelling and drain field. A deed of gift has been prepared in conjunction with the plat, and it contains the required covenant that prohibits the transfer of the property within 10 years of its receipt, except in conformity with Section 31-514, subsection B.3 of the UDO. Lastly, all parties have completed a sworn affidavit acknowledging that the purpose of the family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the grantee and to keep the family estate within the immediate family. In summary, this request meets the criteria for a family transfer subdivision. Therefore, staff recommends approval of FTR 2021-003. That concludes my presentations, and if you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this transfer? Officer Jackson, is there anyone in the lobby? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, if you need to speak, you need to push the speak button on your mics. They won't go on automatic. Do we have any comments, motion for the, this family transfer?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of FTR 2021-0003. Any conditions? Oh, there are none.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Commissioner Hicks.
Second the motion.
Second from Mrs. Staylor. All in favor, would you say aye?
Aye.
I think that covers the voice vote. We have three public hearings today on our agenda. The public hearings, first off, this meeting would be televised for public viewing, and the the public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttals. The first item on our agenda for a public hearing today is rezoning request, RZN 2021-008, conditional Hillpoint Farms Plan Development. Mr. Goomis, will you read the caption, please?
Rezoning request, RZN 2021-008, conditional Hillpoint Farms Plan Development, submitted by Melissa Venable, Land Planning Solutions Agent, on behalf of Mark Lambert, River Highlands LLC, applicant and property owner, in accordance with Sections 31-304, 31-305, and 31-404 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk in order to amend the previously approved proffered conditions for property located at 1,000 Hillpoint Boulevard, zoning map 26F, parcel S asterisk 6. The purpose of this request generally is to amend the approved master plan for the Hillpoint Farms Plan Development by modifying the location and amount of previously approved residential, recreational, and active and passive open space land uses. The affected properties are located at 1,000 Hillpoint Boulevard, zoning map 26F, parcel S asterisk 6. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chuckettuck Voting Borough, Zoned PD, Plan Development Overlay District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2021-008, conditional, and Kevin Wine will present the staff report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the Planning Commission. As Mr. Goomis stated, this is a request to amend the approved master plan for Hillpoint Farms, the Hillpoint Farms Master Plan Community by modifying the location and amount of previously approved residential, recreation, and active and open space land uses. And specifically, the purpose of this is to redistribute 195 unlevered, single-family residential units within the development to redevelop portions of the previously existing golf course parcel. The property is located at 1,000 Hillpoint Boulevard and is designated for a use as a golf course on the approved master plan and designated within the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. So, this community has a great deal of history, and I'll touch on that here. I wish I could say briefly, but it is a lot of history. So, in 1986, City Council approved rezoning request RR 1386 for the purpose of creating the Hillpoint Farms Plan Development Housing District located off of Godwin Boulevard and Hillpoint Road. The original master plan called for a total of 2,448 units, and a maximum of those of, total units would be 513 multifamily dwelling units with the planned development. So, in September 1997, City Council voted to amend this Hillpoint Master Plan. There were several changes to the master plan at this time, including a reconfiguration of the 18-hole golf course, the modification of the internal street system, and the decrease in overall dwelling units by 609 units from what was originally approved. This amendment moved the location of the Nansman River Golf Course to its current location, and it also reduced the planned total units from 2,448 to 1,813. In 1999, the city adopted a new Unified Development Ordinance that included rules for PD zoning. Section 31-404 allowed existing PDs to be governed by the ordinance that was in effect at the time of their creations. As such, Hillpoint Farms Master Plan is governed by the rules and regulations found within the city's Suffolk zoning ordinance, which was adopted in 1976. In October of 2016, approval was received to change the zoning of 37.65 acres within the Hillpoint Farms Plan Development District from PD, which is what the majority of the community is designated, to RU, Residential Urban Zoning District. This rezoning impacted a portion of the Nansman River Golf Club, which reduced its overall size to make room for 193 single-family residential dwellings. These dwellings are included and accounted for within the total 1,813 dwelling units allowed in the amended PD zoning district. In December of 2019, RZN 2019-009 was approved that allowed for an amendment to the master plan to facilitate the transfer of 230 multifamily residential units from parcel H to parcel B. At the time of this request, parcel H was approved for 394 multifamily units, while parcel B was designated for office commercial use. On March 17, 2021, site plan was approved for what is being called the Port 58 Apartments on this parcel, parcel B, and they're currently under construction. So, the applicant in this case is requesting to amend the approved Hillpoint Farms Master Plan to change the designated use of a portion of parcel S*6. Presently, S*6 is designated for use on the approved master plan, most recently amended in December of 2019 as a golf course use. Parcel S6 contains approximately, or consists of approximately 138 acres, and applicant is proposing utilizing approximately 54 acres for residential use, while the balance would be preserved as a variety of open space. Specifically, the applicant is seeking to leverage an underutilized balance of residential units within the Hillpoint Farms Plan Development. As mentioned previously in the case history, Hillpoint Farms was approved for 2,448 units initially, which was reduced to 1,813 units as a part of a comprehensive amendment in 1997. Hillpoint Farms Plan Development is a master plan development that is regulated through the master plan that was provided at the time of its creation, which required approval by City Council. The master plan identified numerous parcels and designated these parcels for specific uses. The uses in Hillpoint include low-density residential, which is residential of four units per acre or less, medium-density, single-family detached residential, six units per acre, or a higher medium-density residential category, which allows for up to eight units per acre, high-density residential, which allows for 16 units per acre, to include multifamily. And additionally, office and commercial uses were identified, an elementary school site, infrastructure, hotels, a movie studio, open space, and the golf course. For residential uses, the number of units were specified by parcel based on the designated density and size of the tract. As such, the development yield on a particular parcel is finite. As Hillpoint Farms has become built out for numerous reasons, certain parcels have not been developed to realize their full development potential. And as such, over time, the city has received requests to leverage these outstanding development yield through the rezoning application and master plan amendment process. As noted, this map has been modified throughout the years, and as it currently stands, when considering proposed development and parcels within Hillpoint Farms Plan Development that have been out, there's an unlevered unit total of 293 units. As noted, the current master plan that is in effect allows for the development of 1,813 units, which consist of 1,157 single-family detached units, 143 single-family attached units, and 513 multifamily units. Presently, a combination of 1,520 units have been developed or are remaining to be developed. The golf course in its present configuration is interspersed throughout Hillpoint Farms. The conceptual plan, which is proffered, shows four disjointed portions of the course. The largest portion is bounded by the River Highlands neighborhood to the east, Hillpoint Commons to the south, parcel H, the proposed Hillpoint Preserve Development to the east, and undeveloped, environmentally sensitive land to the north. The second-largest portion, to the east of River Highlands, is north and west of Hillpoint Greens and Hillpoint Estates, and south of some environmentally sensitive undeveloped land. Two smaller portions are located south of Hillpoint Boulevard and north of Hillpoint Road, bounded by Hillpoint Elementary to the east and the intersection of Hillpoint Road and Hillpoint Boulevard to the west. Each section would take independent ingress/egress from existing public roads. Supplemental information provided by the applicant indicates that it is their belief that the best option to preserve the vast amount of open space that has become abandoned since the closure of the golf course is the redistribution of its ownership. Specifically, the applicant has been in negotiations with Hillpoint Farms Homeowners Association as it relates to assuming ownership of the approximately 84 acres of open space that will be retained through this proposal. Maintenance of the residual open space by the Hillpoint Farms Homeowners Association is proffered by the applicant, and the applicant argues that in order to compensate for the cost that will be incurred by the HOA for the maintenance of this area's open space, the new 195 residential units will offset the cost through collected HOA fees. These points have been important issues in several public meetings the applicant has hosted between property owners in the community and the applicant. Additionally, the applicant has provided a market study that directly addresses the viability of the property as a golf course and offers a comprehensive examination of golf courses' uses in general. Staff has evaluated this request in accordance with the guidelines and principles established within the Comprehensive Plan and offers the following. Policy 2.1 speaks to keeping development in focused, in designated growth areas in the city, and specifically, Action 21A notes to ensure that the city's land use regulations support higher density and sensitive development within these focused growth areas. So, the Hillpoint Farms Plan Development is located within the Central Growth Area and is designated Suburban Use District. The original master plan was approved in the 1980s, and the proposal in question does not change the number of proposed units within this community. And thus, it does comply with the intent of the originally submitted plan, which creates a mixed-use development consisting of a variety of commercial uses and residential uses at varying densities. Policy 2.2, assure that development occurs in a predictable and orderly manner. Hillpoint Farms is an approved master plan community, the original approval, which dates back to 1986, and it's been amended several times, as I've noted. However, in the original plan, has largely remained intact, as each identified development pod has been developed for varying reasons, and undeveloped balance has remained. As stated previously in this report, the community has been approved for 1,813 residential units of varying density, and only 1,520 have been developed or have been accounted for through development plan submission or anticipation of development plan submission. This leaves a balance of 293 units, the vast majority of which are low-density, four units per acre or less units. The golf course was initially designed as a central amenity within the planned community, and unfortunately, market conditions have resulted in its closure. As such, when evaluating proposals for the golf course's redevelopment, the preservation of the central green space area is a key consideration. As illustrated and proffered by the applicant, the applicant anticipates developing 54 acres of this 130-acre larger site. The balance, 84 acres, will remain preserved as open space, whether it's passive, active, or preserved for potential reforestation. The existing golf cart paths will be preserved and repurposed into an interconnected trail system, and the open space, as identified on the conceptual, the proffered conceptual land use plan, will be required to be maintained by the existing Hillpoint Farms Homeowners Association, as proffered by the applicant. Furthermore, the open space will consist of a kayak launch, which is also proffered by the applicant. In addition to the preservation of open space, it's important to note that the applicant has proffered certain building designs to this portion of the development in an effort to achieve residential products that are compatible with the development observed in the greater Hillpoint Farms community. While the redevelopment of a portion of the golf course may not align with how the community was initially envisioned, it is important to note that nearly two-thirds, 64% of the existing golf course, will remain as open space. The repurposing of the land previously utilized for this golf course will allow for the remaining 84 acres to be preserved and appropriately maintained as necessary by the existing HOA. As such, provisions have been taken to ensure the development of this portion of the community takes place in a reasonably predictable manner and in a fashion that is compatible with the existing residential uses in the community. Policy 2.3, promote the balance of residential and non-residential uses. Commercial uses within the Hillpoint Farms community have been planned where appropriate, within close proximity to Godwin Boulevard. These pods of developed and undeveloped commercial land rely on the residents of communities like Hillpoint to remain viable. As previously noted, the approved unit count in Hillpoint Farms, over time, has resulted in an underutilization of units. As such, development of this portion of the community will work to leverage the approved unit total and work to balance portions of the community and Godwin Boulevard corridor alike that are designated for commercial use. Policy 2.4, promote compatibility in land use patterns. As noted, the applicant has proffered certain residential design standards in an effort to achieve reasonable compatibility with existing residential development located within Hillpoint Farms. These standards include minimum square footage requirements based upon home type, brick skirting, the construction of two-car garages for detached homes, and the requirement that not less than 50% of the home facades consist of non-vital material, among other items. A full list of these proffers are noted in staff's report. Additionally, the proposal does not amend the overall approved unit total for Hillpoint Farms, nor does it propose a density that exceeds what was originally approved. As such, the 195 residential units are proposed to be developed at the community's low-density designation of four units or less per acre. This density cap will dictate neighborhood design and is anticipated to result in a development that, in whole, is compatible to the land use patterns and designs observed within Hillpoint Farms. Policy 6.1, encourage development of a balanced and diverse housing stock and ensure that the city's land use regulations allow for a variety of housing types, such as single-family detached, single-family attached, and multifamily. As originally approved, Hillpoint Farms Plan Development incorporated a variety of housing types and varying densities. While the medium and high-density development pods have largely realized their overall unit totals, approved unit totals, the approved low-density unit total has been underutilized by nearly 300 units. As such, this master plan amendment would allow for the originally approved unit total to be achieved and the original overall density mix and housing variety to be realized. The planned community, as originally approved, supported this policy, and the proposed amendment strengthens alignment with this Comprehensive Plan policy by allowing the overall unit mix to be realized. The purpose and intent, as noted in staff's report and analyzed with any rezoning application, we look at adequate public facilities, and the purpose and intent of the adequate public facilities ordinance is to ensure that public facilities are available to support new development and associated impacts that each public facility meets or exceeds the level of service standards established by the Comprehensive Plan and the UDO. And no rezoning should be approved, which would cause a reduction in levels of service for any public facility impacted. However, it is important to note, with no additional units proposed within the Hillpoint Farms Plan Development, any potential impacts to public facilities have been previously evaluated at the time of the initial application. Additionally, the applicant has proffered several items, which are covered in detail in staff's report. However, in summary, and I'll touch on those briefly, the maximum of 195 residential units is proffered, a multi-use path network, a kayak launch, the construction of a sidewalk within a right-of-way between Sheraton Lane and Meadows Court, the inclusion of new homes and open spaces depicted on the conceptual layout in the Hillpoint Farms HOA, improvements as outlined within the submitted and approved traffic impact assessment, and a variety of building material and design standards. Based on this review, staff finds that the master plan amendment request for Hillpoint Farms Plan Development is consistent with the principles of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. Specifically, this request allows for the utilization of underutilized, under-leveraged units within the community while redeveloping an abandoned use, while preserving 84 acres as managed and maintained open space. As such, staff recommends approval of this master plan with the submitted proffered conditions. Mr. Chairman, that concludes staff's report. I will be available after the public hearing.
Would you like to come forward and speak in favor of this item?
Good afternoon. My name's John Wagner. I live at 610 North Broad Street, and I represent Hobbs Adams Investment Group, which is one of the owners of River Highlands, the applicant here. And I thought it and I thought it might be a good idea to provide a little bit of perspective from the applicant's perspective as to how we got to where we are right now. We opened the golf course back in 1980, or excuse me, 1999, and operated it not particularly profitably, but we operated it up through the end of 2020. Shortly after we opened the golf course in 1999, other courses began to open around the area, and we saw some strains on the amount of play that we were able to get out there. Our revenue stream at Nansman River actually peaked in 2006, I believe, and ever since 2006, it has steadily declined. And that's mainly because of a lack of interest in golf in general. I mean, the interest nationwide is going down. Plus, we had other courses that were putting pressure on our ability to raise our rates and also taking play away from us. At the same time, we had increases in the cost of chemicals to put on the course, cost of labor, cost of equipment. of labor, cost of equipment. So all that resulted in the fact that we were, we're not making money out there. So in 2015, we contracted with Terry Peterson Companies to, for them to purchase 37.6 acres, I believe, of the property for some home sites. Their construction was to take place in two phases. The first phase was not going to dramatically impact our ability to operate the course, but the second phase was going to, to cause an impact. And our plans at that point were to, to reorient the course to maintain an 18-hole golf course out there. We felt like with their purchase of the 37 acres, we would be able to pay off some debt, and in paying off the debt, improve our cash flow situation, and possibly get back to a situation where we were operating profitably. And the more that we looked at it, that just did not seem to be the case. So as their second phase began to get closer and closer, and we looked at the cost that it was going to take us to reorient the course, and the fact that, you know, play was not increasing, it just did not make sense to keep the course open. So at that time, we began to explore some other options, and looking around for other ways that we could sell the remaining part of the course off. So ultimately, at the end of 2020, we closed the course for good, and it has remained closed since then. I can answer any questions that you guys have, but I felt like it was appropriate that you guys at least understand from my perspective, kind of how we got where we are. Sir?
You can ask your question.
Okay. Thank you all.
Speak in favor of this request?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, thank you, thank you for hearing us this afternoon. My name is Melissa Bannable with Land Planning Solutions, located at 5857 Harborview Boulevard in Suffolk, Virginia. It has been a two-year process that I have been working with the owners of the golf course, also working with the city, who has done an outstanding job of working through all that you've just been presented. They've been very helpful, and working with the community. I want to, I want to especially thank the Hillpoint HOA and Advisory Committee for their input, knowledge, and assistance in discussing details of the community, existing issues, and frankly, their open-mindedness as we came forth with this fairly substantial proposal that affects quite a few citizens in Hillpoint. They've been a pleasure to work with. I also want to thank John Craig with UPA. He is present this, this afternoon, and he's had, he's been very helpful in facilitating our conversations and information sharing, as he, he is here also to answer any additional questions you may have as we move forward. I wanted to also add to what Mr. Wagner had said, in the, in the 20 years that the golf course had operated, in no given year were there more than 10, 10 members of Hillpoint Farms that belonged to the golf course community. And that is not necessarily good or bad. It was bad for the golf course community, but it just wasn't a community that took off and wanted to support golfing. I think it's, it's great to look at, but there's not a whole lot of folks out there that have that kind of time on a Saturday or on any given afternoon to play golf. So it just, it just didn't work, unfortunately. I also wanted to make mention, and I hope, today, this morning, I opened my email, and I had a letter of support that I believe was sent to staff from the Hillpoint HOA, and I hope that you also had received that. If you did not, I have a copy that I can share with you. I can place it in the basket if you need me to. In the past year, we've had multiple meetings, both virtually and in person, with the Hillpoint Farm HOA. We've shared and revised exhibits to help facilitate questions and concerns, and changes that have been requested. As an example, when we first proposed this application, we had a few townhouses or townhome units proposed. We also thought maybe a boat ramp would be a good idea, and once we received communication from the community, we removed both the townhome, any townhomes that were proposed within the development. We also eliminated the boat ramp, as we believe that it would have, and what the, the feedback we got was that it would have been too disturbing. So where you see the kayak locations, possible kayak locations, one of those was a boat ramp, and we converted it to the kayak, kayak launch location, as to be less disturbing, both to the nature and to the residents that live out there. I've observed, I've observed a couple other golf course communities grow through this process. Kiln Creek was one example, Kahoon Plantation over in Chesapeake is another, and they've not done it very successfully. And in this case, like I mentioned, I'm, I'm very, I'm sure that we're going to hear from lots of different folks, but I think we've really tried to come to a meeting of the minds, and try to create a good balance of open space versus what would be developed. In this case, like I said, we've had a lot of open dialogue, and I hope compromise, or what I perceive as compromise. What has come from that is the opportunity for Hillpoint HOA to increase their value by adding 84 acres of open space and an existing clubhouse to their community. Most importantly, this gives all residents the ability to physically enjoy their surroundings. 84 acres of open space that will include a proffered kayak launch, areas that can be reforested to decrease maintenance costs and create areas for wildlife, and a multi-use path for walking, hiking, and biking, just outside the front door of so many of the residents. I believe this is a tremendous asset. The clubhouse will also become the HOA's property. With some positive planning, there are several options for this building. During our meeting, it was mentioned that the clubhouse could be used for several types of catered or non-catered events for folks within the community, or the people outside could rent, rent the facility. It could, it could include a fitness facility or pool. Several ideas were thrown out and are very possible. A golf course, in theory, looks great. This, in fact, was a beautiful course, but golf didn't suit Hillpoint. Therefore, transformation can provide open space and an amenity to a neighborhood, and I believe, like I said, a good compromise between the owners of the, of the course, which has since closed, and the community that surrounds it. As Kevin mentioned, there is no additional impact to the levels of service, as the proposed 195 homes fall within the original PD zoning. The rezoning is supported by staff, and I am hopeful that this application can gain your support as well. It is critical to Hillpoint that maintenance and improvements can begin quickly, and the closed course does not continue to go into disrepair. And I'll stand by for any additional questions or comments.
Come forward, please, and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Brenda Kerr. I live at 2731 Riverwatch Drive in the River Bluff subdivision. I, I do want to remind everybody that Hillpoint is not the only subdivision affected by what is proposed here today. We have about 100, just over 100 homes back there by the elementary school. I'm very concerned that Hillpoint Association is going to be able to properly maintain these properties, and I'll give you an example of why I'm concerned about that. Along Hillpoint Road, there are currently, which is, there's Hillpoint Homes on one side, and on the other side is the golf course. There's, there's two parcels on there that, that have like three of the holes on it. They currently do not maintain those evergreen trees that are on that road right now. So it's a very wide road, however, the trees are hanging out into the street a good six feet, and they're only maintained up five feet. So essentially, you're losing an entire lane of that road, which has caused the biggest safety issues in our neighborhood, which is, there is no sidewalk on either side of Hillpoint Road. So it's great that we're keeping the golf cart paths. I'm one of those people who does, who did play golf there when it was open, but it always concerned me that when I would go to work early in the morning, people are walking in the street, sometimes they're wearing reflective things, sometimes they aren't. And especially if they were walking on the side where the trees are not maintained by the homeowners association, you couldn't see them when you were coming down the road. They're hidden in the, in the shadows there. So I would just say, if, if we go forward with this, I'd like to, one, get reassurance that the city is going to enforce the requirements to maintain the roadway, which they have not, because those trees have been like that for well over five or six years, since I moved into that subdivision. The other thing is, I would ask that not only would they maintain those golf cart paths, but that they would put a sidewalk in through that whole section of Hillpoint Road around the corner to Hillpoint Boulevard, which is right there where you go into the clubhouse entrance, because there is not a consistent sidewalk even on that road, but there is no sidewalk on Hillpoint Road itself. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Kerr. Is anyone else who would speak in opposition?
Thank you for the opportunity to present the questions I have. My name is Ray Orland, and I'm one of the longest residents of Hillpoint Farms. I moved in 20 years ago, so therefore, I've got a valued interest and a stake in what happens out there. The first thing I'd like to say is, on the voluntary proffer statement submitted by the owner, I'd like to note, is this a legal binding agreement? Because if it is, where that signature is, which you can't read, there should be a space above it where there's a printed, a place for a printed name, and then a signature. Because years from now, if somebody does any research, they're going to be saying, "I can't read it, can you read it?" If it's a legal document, it should be something where there's a printed and then a signature. Also, the reason I'm asking is whether it's legal or not. There's a lot of things that's stated in here, and, and that's the 195 homes that will become part of the Hillpoint Farms Homeowners' Association. 20 years ago, when I moved into Hillpoint Farms, we were told by the developer at that time that every development within that Hillpoint Farms sub area would be part of the HOA. That's not true. Several have opted out. Hillpoint Meadows, the condos, and like the lady said, River Bluff. If we're going to use the revenue from the additional 195 homes to do repairs to the clubhouse and maintain the, the common grounds, I have a background in government contracts. You never obligate money you don't have. And I'd like to have something, me, someone tell me that, yes, this is a legal document, that 195 homes will be part of the HOA. Also, in these proffered statements, there's something very critical to me. They put down there the specifications as far as requirements for a single-family home, other, other areas such as one-story homes and so forth. The one area I'd like to see specified is the spacing between the homes. I was never in favor of what was done with River Highlands. They're single, individual, single-family homes, but I guarantee you, there's not six or eight feet between one house and the other. We were told that any development in the Hillpoint Farms area last winter, that would be consistent with what is originally there. To me, consistency is not just to the type of materials, the, the specifications on the garages and so forth, but consistency also means how they're presented and how the homes are spaced out. Another area of contention is Hillpoint Road. The way it's proposed now is there's going to be homes along Hillpoint Road that will be facing Hillpoint Road. So there's going to be access to the, to the driveways into that road. I live, when I leave my neighborhood, I have to go up to Hillpoint Road. When school is in session, and, and there's people that are late getting their kids to school, that 25 mile an hour speed limit is, is, it's, it's like a drag strip. You're going to put homes now where they're going to have possibly parallel parking on Hillpoint Road, along with a few people parallel parking on the other side, reducing the overall effective area of that road. We need to keep in mind that there's a school down there. We've got to think about safety. And, and the way it is now, I just think the, my, my overall feeling of the whole thing is, is the more homes they can put in there, the more money that they're going to make. Probably shouldn't say that, but you know, that's the way it is. And basically, I think the spacing between the homes, that should be addressed. It shouldn't be left open to the developer, where he can put 10 homes where there should only be five or six. If he wants to maintain consistency of the neighborhood, the integrity of the neighborhood, then that should be a requirement also. Thank you for your concern.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Stanfield. I live at 123 Birdie Drive, and I'm, I'm glad this gentleman spoke about the homes being having parallel parking on Hillpoint Boulevard. I'm really with him on that, because that was my concern also. And then the homeowners association being able to take care of the properties that they already have, we're already having some problems getting things done the way it is. So, and I actually wish we could actually pull out of the homeowners association, because I don't see where they're doing the work up to standards where it should be. And then they also, my house is on the, on the course where they're building now, and when they cut that road through and built up the hill, all the water comes to my house. So when it rains, I got about a four-foot pond right in the back of my yard. It runs from my yard to the front of my driveway. And I talked to them several times about trying to correct this problem, because it used not to be like that. It could rain as much as it wanted to, and it would never flood in the back of my house. But now, it is flooding. I've talked to them several times about getting it corrected, because they must have cut some pipes or something back there, and they said something in the last meeting we had at, over at, at the clubhouse, that they were going to correct the problem. But it's still, last rain we had, the water came right back up again. And I know this doesn't affect too many other people, other than me, because the water from that whole area is draining to my house. So that's a big problem that I have to deal with, and I really want to get that corrected, because it's not, it could cause me problems in my yard, and the moisture problem that can bring into my home. So I would most definitely like them to get that part straightened out. I know a lot of the things we can't change are already done, so we might, we might have to live with that. But that part, most definitely, I'd like to see it getting straightened out, the drainage, because it's not flooding in the new houses. All of it's coming to my house, me and my neighbor. The two of us have to deal with this pond of water in our house. And the neighbors that are to the left of me, the water is building up behind their fences and things, which is a problem to them, too. They might not say anything, but we know standing water is a problem. And I don't see any of them here today, but I know if they could speak, they would get up and say the same thing. They fixed a little bit of it, but it's still a whole lot of water just coming up in there. Thank you very much. Oh, one more thing. The, those dump trucks, the roads are getting torn up coming down Hillpoint Boulevard. So when we had the last meeting, it was who is going to fix the road? The builders say, and developers say, that the city's going to fix it. And the city, I guess they don't have time to be fixing all the roads, and people calling all the time, but that's one part we wish that would get straightened out. After all is said and done, somebody to fix the roads and make them look like they're brand new again.
Good afternoon. I'm Ricky Roach, 1034 Snead Drive, over there off of, in Fairways Crossings. One of my concerns is that we have one exit out of that neighborhood. That's all we have. We, I was here for the tornado, and during those four months we were already building, that road was busy. And then once they put the school in, it's even more busy. So I think we need another exit out of the neighborhood if we're going to add more houses to it, because back in 2008, we didn't have as many houses as we have now. So if you look at that, I feel that's a safety issue. I know they said they did some sort of traffic thing to see how that works, but if you ever had to get everybody out of that neighborhood as an evacuation, and that road gets blocked, we're stuck. It's just a thought to think about for safety. Let's see, what else? I don't agree with the homeowners taking over the clubhouse. That's a homeowner's problem, honestly, because it needs a lot of work, and the last couple of years, it's been flooding in the basement, and I just don't know that, that we need to take on that kind of responsibility, so. But that's all I've got. Any questions for me? Thanks, sir.
If not, we'll open the floor. We have five minutes for rebuttal. Ms. Venable?
I do hope I can address some of these concerns. Obviously, as we get through the rezoning process, there's a lot more work to do as you get through, we get through engineering and working out some of the issues that were brought up. The first speaker is correct in regard to, there's not a sidewalk on Hillpoint Road. And anywhere we touch Hillpoint Road, a sidewalk will have to be installed. That's part of the policy of Suffolk, is wherever we are creating development, curb, gutter, sidewalk has to be in place. So the good news is that sidewalk will be installed along Hillpoint Road where we're creating new development. And those sidewalks will link into the existing trail system, as I mentioned previously. The idea that there will be some development along Hillpoint Road, that is true, but where we propose any development along Hillpoint Road, we have alleys behind it, so driveways actually will not, and this city will not allow driveways to go out onto Hillpoint Road in the ordinance, that wouldn't be acceptable. There's an alley placed behind those homes, so they would be alley-loaded or rear-loaded, so the fronts of the homes would face out, but the garages or driveways would be in the rear. We had shown some pictures of that. The reason for that was twofold. One, obviously we wanted to good luck, we wouldn't wanna put the rear of the houses to the roadway, because it's a fairly visible roadway. Secondly, the idea, and it's kind of Planning 101, if you can help to, the perception of narrowing the street, we obviously aren't gonna narrow the street, but the, right now it's a very wide right away. It's a 60-foot wide right away, where our standard right ways are 50-foot ride. It has over 30 feet of pavement. There's plenty of room there to show parallel parking. So if we can stripe that to show that some of the roadway is narrowed, typically what happens is cars will slow down. When your field of vision is wide open, you go. You go fast. But when your field of vision is narrowed, you have to slow down, because you can't take in as much at one time. The but to that is, that is something that we propose. Ultimately, what's written on the plan is that we will have to work with traffic in regard to that, and we have to find a traffic calming measure. If it's not parallel parking, it will be something else. But one of the large complaints that we heard from the residents is that people speed down that roadway to get to schools. Ironically, it's probably a lot of parents that trying to get to school on time, and we're speeding, and then the concern is that, what if one of the children get into the roadway? So we're going to work together, and it's noted on the plan, that the parallel parking may not be the final solution. It is something that we proposed, but we'll be working with the city to get to the right solution, to try to help to slow down the traffic on that roadway. So we'll continue to work through that. Maintenance, I can't, unfortunately, I can't speak to in regard to what the homeowners association is currently doing. I do believe they're trying to do their best, but there may be some things that are pointed out today that they can address further. And then the flooding issue, I don't know if anybody wants to get up and speak on that. Like the gentleman said, they've tried to address it. It sounds like it needs to be addressed further. That's not part of this zoning, but it is something that certainly needs to be addressed, because we do not wanna impact negatively the existing homes that are out there as new development takes place. And I've noticed this with some older, just as an aside, some older communities that had been created with the intent that everyone would be part of the homeowners association. This also happened in Riverfront. There's, I think everyone, the intent was that that's what was going to happen, everyone would belong. And then as different developers came in, they interpreted language differently. They weren't present for when it all happened. They came in later and found ways to create their own homeowners association. I don't think it's by anyone's fault, but that's happened here, where some of the neighborhoods or some of the developers have come in, created their own homeowners association, as opposed to coming into the original homeowners association. That is why specifically we have that proffered. And I hope somebody from the city can speak to the idea that these signed proffers are gonna be part of the ordinance and part of the binding document here. But that is specifically why we added that to the proffer statement, so that these 195 homes will absolutely be part of the existing homeowners association, as opposed to creating their own, therefore paying into the maintenance and what needs to be done as part of the Hillpoint Farms HOA. Hope I answered the questions, and I thank you for your time.
Can't hear you.
I'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, if Ms. Venable would maybe come back up to the podium, I have a question, or perhaps Mr. Wagner, I'm not sure who's gonna be best qualified to answer this. Or so I'm gonna get tag teamed. And I did listen with a little bit of concern about the, you know, the ability of the homeowners association to maintain that amount of acreage in the public spaces. Any kind of cost analysis been done to weigh what the anticipated revenue from these 195 dwellings versus what the anticipated maintenance cost of this open space is, or will be?
I have not done that. I believe the homeowners association has done some of that analysis. I don't have those figures in front of me. But I say that with the idea that we've talked about the, of the 84 acres reforesting some of that area, which would be a very minimal cost. And the reason for that is so you don't have the maintenance of lawn mowing, and you would have, you know, wildlife and just tree growth to eliminate quite a bit, possibly up to 30 acres of that area from maintenance and being just natural. But I don't have a cost, and I don't know if, I think Mr. Craig may have some of that information. And again, with the clubhouse, which I believe is a huge asset to the community, it will very much depend on how they program that and what they decide they'd like to deal with it, on what the cost for that would be.
And then, just out of curiosity, if nothing, if this doesn't go through, who would be responsible for maintaining those 138? What would happen to them?
So that's a great question. Through, again, through the ordinance, there's a certain amount of area along the rightways and along the rightways that have to be maintained. Otherwise, it can go into a natural state. There's no, there's nothing that doctrines or commits them for maintenance outside of the areas along the rightway. And that's just a certain distance from the rightway into the property. Otherwise, it would just be natural. And if you've had an opportunity to look at, the first one that comes to mind is in Chesapeake Cahoon. That's been in a state of disrepair for several years, and it's been very problematic for the city and for the residents adjacent to it. So like I said, I'm hoping that we can act fairly quickly on this, so that maintenance can begin and have a new recreation of that golf course can take place. But if I can ask Mr. Craig to come up, he may be able to help.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, another one that comes to mind, I guess, is Ben's Church Road, where that old golf course used to be, where some of the Centerra offices are.
Smithfield Downs.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know, some of that, I mean, it really does. You know, golf course is a lot of acreage, and to leave it go fallow, and, you know, to look at it now, it's, I mean, it looks like, I mean, it's terrible looking.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
This flooding, no, the road maintenance just came up last month, in terms of who's responsible for taking care of the dump trucks tearing up roads. So I would assume, because there is so much construction going on right in that little spot, there's Hillpoint, there's right at Hillpoint Boulevard and Hillpoint Road, which is another issue, that's a little three-way stop, that's not gonna work. I don't understand how that works, because it certainly doesn't work for me when I just go back to the visit. But I do, I do see that it's still gonna be a three-way stop. Funny. Funny, not funny. But the flood, the issue with maintaining the road, which has to happen, and the issue of the, of being in the right lane, if you're driving, depending on what kind of vehicle you're driving, to avoid the trees overhanging over Hillpoint, that's gotta be fixed, whether you get the 195 homes in golf course area or not. So I don't know what the HOA plans to do, but whether we approve this or not, those, my observation is, that's gotta be fixed, as does the flooding issue with this young man's house. Constant, constant construction is just gonna make his house and his neighbor's house be worse in terms of flooding. So I would assume, I would assume that somebody is going to handle that piece. I'm just, my biggest concern is that the 195 houses have already been proved. So you're gonna get the 195 houses, it's just a matter of where you're gonna put them, if you're gonna put them, where you were planning on putting them before, or whether you're going to fix your problem with the golf course being closed. In my mind, it makes more sense to use your proposal, which is to put houses where they're, to keep from having to do that much maintenance for the HOA. So just because you're gonna get the 195 houses anyway, it's already been approved, I've gotta support it.
I have a question for Mr. Wine, and maybe Bob, some support on this. This is maybe a follow-up to Commissioner Rector's comments. We all have seen where Cahoon Plantation, and I think there's one in Virginia Beach that closed also, that the neighbors have had, just had a nightmare from the problems with the growth that took place in the closed areas. And those, a couple of those, I know that was outside develop. I believe there's even lawsuits involved that were dealing with the property. What is the city's enforcement capabilities of the homeowners association in keeping this property, this undeveloped portion, that'll be the natural areas, monitored or so that it doesn't create a problem for the homeowners in the area? Do I?
That's a very good question. And it goes back to how we treat open space in almost any approved subdivision. That's gonna be determined at the time of subdivision plat, engineering plan. It will be programmed. There will be areas that are active, areas that are passive. The passive areas generally are allowed to be a little bit more natural in their state, and sometimes it's required with cluster subdivisions, in which it's kept in conservation state in perpetuity. But when it comes to active areas, those would obviously, it would be in the best interest for the HOA to program those in a way that results in a well-maintained setting for the residents to utilize. However, some of this would probably be revegetated as open space, to allow for a more attractive natural vegetation to occur. And speaking to the enforcement mechanism of that, those are all things that are handled at the time of subdivision plat, with, depending on what type of subdivision takes place there, cluster subdivisions have additional deeds of open space that are required. But they will note on that plat, they will identify certain areas as open space. And as a part of that, they will need to deed the maintenance of that common area to an entity. Usually, it's a homeowners association. Recordation of that document will be required at the time of recordation of the final subdivision plat.
And as a follow-up to that, when the plat is recorded, and all of these areas are designated certain areas, so at that particular point in time, the owner of the property, assuming it would be the homeowners association, would then be, basically, would know exactly what the maintenance requirements for those common areas would be. Is that correct?
It would be outlined within that deed of easement.
Okay. And going, once again, to the enforcement, once that's been placed on record, then it would be up to the city to enforce those provisions that were accepted?
Well, in this case, there are essentially two mechanisms for that. One, we have that deed of open space. It's the responsibility of the HOA, as a part of that approved subdivision, to maintain it appropriately. And if there are issues with that, we do have a property maintenance division within the city that would work directly with them to ensure that it is being properly maintained. Additionally, and this was noted in some of the conversations during the public hearing in regards to the proffer, the proffer states that, the proffer, it's a conditional rezoning. Those conditions, that this zoning does not exist without these conditions. It's a part of the ordinance. Those go hand in hand. So the participation of those properties within the HOA is legally binding, and that would offer another enforcement mechanism. Yes, sir.
One, one more thing. The paths, the golf cart paths that are indicated that they'd be maintained for trails and et cetera, once again, the maintenance of those would fall on the homeowners association?
Yes, that would probably be identified on any subsequent subdivision plats as active open area. And they would be required to show those as part of essentially a subdivision site plan, engineering plan associated with its development. And as such, they would, during the final subdivision process, we would ensure that they would provide us with documentation for the legal maintenance of those areas. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if Mr. Wine can answer this, but in the letter that was passed around to us, sent by Mr. Bowman, who's the president of the homeowners association out there, item number five, you got United Property Associates, which manages the HOA, has concluded that the addition of the clubhouse and additional land would permit other recreational facilities, which is a community swimming pool would be beneficial, so on and so forth. What authority, how do they, how does United Property Associates, which I'm sure the HOA is paying, you know, for their management expertise, what sort of authority do they have in terms of maintaining these items that we talked, have been talking about? Who gives them their orders? Or do they give the orders?
Being unfamiliar with the covenants and documents regarding the Hillpoint Farms HOA, I do not know the specific answer to that question. However, generally, in situations like that, you have a company that is responsible for kind of managing and bringing everyone together, that really has no involvement in the HOA itself, other than, other than the management of what is within their covenants and restrictions.
Well, the only reason I ask, I live in a community that has an HOA, that is United Property Associates. And I get letters, I mean, people out there get letters from United Property Associates if you have any problems or anything like that. And our primary contact is not really through the HOA, it's through this United Property Associates, in Virginia Beach, actually. And that was the question I have about this particular arrangement, that this HOA has with this management group. And again, do they call the shots in terms of fixing up the, maintaining, you know, what's left over from the golf course and that sort of thing? I don't know, I know it's a detailed type of situation involving the HOA. However, some of these questions that have come up, I think, relate back to some of these questions that have come up, I think, relate back to this management group, um, that they have to rely on, the HOA has to rely on this management group to call the shots. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioners, comments, motion?
Mr. Chairman, um... Um, Mr. Chairman, um, I've reviewed this in, in detail, um, this is a, um, it's upsetting me personally, because I, I enjoy playing golf out there, with the exception of not holding my five, uh, which I'm glad will be disappearing at, at any cost. But, um, it's, it's a difficult situation for the existing owners. I know that golf has, um, has, has fallen off, uh, and I know that the owners did everything in their power to, to take care of that and keep this as a, um, as an asset for the city of Suffolk. So, uh, from that standpoint, I really hate to see it go. This being a, um, developed subdivision with certain criteria, the number of homes fits into the offer, uh, very well, the fact that the, um, the existing clubhouse will be, um, given over to the homeowners' association with the hope that it will be maintained and even additional activities approved for the, um, the, excuse me, the residents of, uh, Hill Point Farms. I'll put in form of a motion, uh, rezoning request, RZN 2021-008, conditional, with proffers be approved. We had a discussion of the motion. Um, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna, you know, basically go on record is, is, and I've listened to all the, the discussion about the, um, maintaining of the property afterwards, and, I'm gonna support this thing, and I'm in all, and I'm in favor of it, and just simply because if nothing else, whether it works or not, it does put the responsibility for maintaining the property on somebody's shoulders. So, I, I like the fact that the homeowners' association is, is going to be, you know, responsible for maintaining that part of the property. So, for that reason, I'm, I'm gonna support it.
Any other discussion? Mr. Goomis, you're in, I'll call, call please.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Edward?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goomis. Uh, this will go to City Council on nine fifteen twenty-one with a recommendation for approval. The next item we have on our public hearing today is, uh, rezoning request, RZN 2021-016. And that's on Sleepy Hole Road, Mr. Goomis, you read the caption, please.
Exception request, CEX 2021-008, 2663 Riverwatch Drive, submitted by Stacy Brett Rickmore, applicant and property owner.
The one previous, the rezoning request.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you. Anxious. Rezoning request, RZN 2021-016, 3332 Sleepy Hole Road, submitted by Calvin Cole, Crystal C LLC applicant, on behalf of Ronald Smith, property owner, in accordance with section thirty-one, three oh four and thirty-one, three oh five of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk, to change the zoning from RR Rural Residential Zoning District to RLM Rural Low Medium Density Zoning District, for property located at thirty-three, thirty-two Sleepy Hole Road, zoning map nineteen, parcel seventy-one. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, zoned RR Rural Residential Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2021-016. And Brittany Collier will provide staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. As stated, this is a request to rezone property located at thirty-three, thirty-two Sleepy Hole Road. The subject property is located within the Northern Growth Area, within the Suburban Use District. The applicant is requesting to change end zoning from the current RR Rural Residential Zoning District to RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. The north of the property, to the north of the property are single-family dwellings, fields and forested land, zoned RR Rural Residential. To the southeast of the property are single-family dwellings and forested land, zoned RLM Residential Low Medium, and to the west of the property, you have the Nansman River Estates, zoned RLM Residential Low Medium. The maximum density for the requested RLM zoning district is two point nine units per acre, which aligns with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, as, in which it is recommended a density of one to five units per acre for the suburban use district. The applicant has indicated that the low density would allow for large lots with ample yard space. According to the applicant, the RLM zoning district is more appropriate at this location, given the proximity of the nearby recreational amenities and other single-family dwellings. As previously stated, the subject property is adjacent to properties to the east, west, and south, zoned RLM. Therefore, this rezoning will enable and encourage the continuity of the existing land use patterns observed in the area. Additionally, the property is positioned well inside of the suburban use district, as recommended in the Comprehensive Plan, that the current zoning district, RR, is not the appropriate zoning district for the suburban use district. The RLM zoning district allows for a density that is well-suited for the suburban use district. The applicant's request to rezone the subject property from RR to RLM is for the purpose of creating up to three lots and to develop no more than one dwelling per lot. The proposed lots will be required to meet the dimensional and development standards for the RLM zoning district and would be reviewed at the time of development plan review. Traffic has reviewed this request and has advised the applicant that the site will be limited to one entrance from Sleepy Hole Road. In regards to the schools, based on the size of the property, the site could currently be developed for one single-family dwelling under the current RR zoning designation, meaning the by right development of the property is one single-family dwelling. The additional two new single-family dwellings are anticipated to generate one elementary school student, zero middle school children, and zero high school students, in accordance to the student generation rates outlined in section thirty-one dash six zero one of the UDO. The property is currently served by the Nansman Parkway Elementary, John Yates Middle School, and Nansman River High School. Currently, there is a deficit at the Nansman Rivers High School, however, the proposed use is not anticipated to generate any high school students. Therefore, the schools have adequate capacity to absorb the impacts anticipated from the two additional single-family dwellings that the proposed use would create. The applicant has voluntary proffered the following conditions in support of this rezoning request, one being that no more than three single-family homes shall be constructed on the subject property, and two, that the property will be accessed by one shared entrance. The entrance shall provide shared access to all lots created through subsequent subdivision of the property by dedicated easement. Lastly, staff has closely reviewed the request to determine its compatibility with the criteria outlined in section thirty-one dash three zero four of the Unified Development Ordinance, as it pertains to requested rezonings. After review, staff finds that proposed rezoning from RR to RLM zoning district aligns with the goals and objectives established within the Comprehensive Plan and Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed zoning is consistent with surrounding land use patterns. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of RZN 2021-016. I'm available for any questions you have following the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this, uh, request?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners, uh, I won't, uh, rehash everything, staff's done an excellent job, uh, on their analysis, and, and we've worked with them...
Sir, you give us your name, please?
I'm Calvin Chaney Cole Jr., I'm sorry, sir. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the owners, and the property is under contract to Whitman Development Group, who I'm, I'm here helping with the rezoning. Um, again, I won't go back over staff's entire report, I would note that there is RLM on the south, the east, and the west sides of us. Uh, we have a partial about one point six acres, and so the lot sizes will be just about three times the minimum lot size for that area. Um, we've agreed to proffer three homes only on the entire site, and also to create one master entrance within the front end. Um, as Brittany mentioned, we are in alignment with the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District, uh, also the UDO, and, uh, we feel this is an appropriate and fair, uh, rezoning, giving all, given all the, um, criteria and city ordinances, and, um, that's all I have right now, thank you for your time, sir.
Is anyone else to speak in favor? Is anyone in, to speak in opposition? We're closed to public hearing, oh, sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is James A. Pelton Jr., I reside at thirty-four thirty Sleepy Hole Road, Suffolk, Virginia. I am an adjacent landowner, and I can only say, if I'm standing on the road, my property is to the left. The property to the right of this, uh, parcel is already zoned RR and has had recent livestock usage. You're gonna rezone this to resi- to, uh, low medium, can cause conflict when there's not sufficient buffers. And my question is, is the rezoning appropriate, given that this is a very small, one point six acre lot? It backs up against a tributary, non-title, that feeds to the Nansman River via Star Creek. That must require, I believe, a one-hundred-foot buffer zone along the right, the left-hand side of the property and my property line, in that hedgerow is a ditch that drains from Sleepy Hole Road down. That may also require additional buffers. So, when you take these Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act buffers into consideration, my question is, can you really put more than one house on this piece of property? Unless they wanna go through the whole variance process on the buffers, which I don't recommend, because of the drainage. So, my question is, really, is this a good use of rezoning for this particular parcel, given that it has the potential to cause conflicts on both sides? Behind, while it is abutted against this property, it's a burr pit back there. No one's ever going to build any closer to that back line than they already are. The front line across to Nansman River Estates is a three-lane road, and again, they have their buffer zone awful, and then you have what is required for the front buffer. So, again, on one point six acres, I can't see three houses, not with all the buffering requirements that are required. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Dolphus Hall, I'm actually thirty-three, twenty-eight with the livestock, um, just in the process of purchasing from the current owner, so we are next door, um, in the two point seven five acres. Active-duty military, so thank you for your service, I truly appreciate that. The owner of the home is active-duty military as well, um, currently, as we're in the process of purchasing the home from him, but I currently reside there now. So, I'm reading a letter on his behalf, Mr. Matthew Tennis, who is unable to be here. Suffolk Community Development Team, I am the current owner of the property of thirty-three, twenty-eight Sleepy Hole Road. However, due to circumstances relating to my current military assignment, and given the very short notice, I am unable to physically attend this first public hearing. Thank you in advance for your consideration of my personal input on this subject. Two of your stated core missions are to assure sustainable, orderly, and efficient new development, and to protect and enhance existing stable communities. I believe that establishing the precedent of approving, of approving a piece meal rezoning of individual lots of the northeast side of this portion of Sleepy Hole Road directly conflict, conflicts with these stated goals. While it may support one growth tenant of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan's vision, implementing the plan in this fashion would absolutely hodgepodge and be short-sighted, rather than an orderly and efficient, and unless strongly mitigated, have a third-order impact ranging from traffic and pedestrian safety problems to frequent privacy disputes between suburban families and the ever-increasing small, small-scale farming population. Thirty-three, thirty-two land is long and narrow, and it is therefore not conducive to a neatly situated suburban mini sprawl prevalent in other areas of Suffolk, including along other portions of Sleepy Hole Road. There isn't enough physical property with, for a shared access road, a natural barrier between zones, and the twenty-three hundred to twenty-eight hundred square foot homes being proposed by the real estate developer, and the natural curb appeal of existing stable community will suffer significantly as a result. The potential development of thirty-three, thirty-two Sleepy Hole property, if rezoned for RLM use, will likely result in three two-story homes squeezed into a plot of land directly adjacent to my two point seven five acre homestead, now which we currently reside in. While I and the two thousand fourteen homeowner, homeowner of thirty-three, twenty-eight may not merit it a landmark status, the original owners and I helped permit authorities from Suffolk Community Development, and they both strive to preserve the respect and natural agricultural heritage of the RR-designated property. The colonial farm-style architecture, brick foundation, and stockade fencing are all examples of how we attempted to do this, which will, unless mitigated with a natural barrier of some sort, starkly contrast with suburban-style dwellings, quickly and cheaply constructed on these subdivided plots next door. At face value, this particular proposal is simply not well-thought-out yet, and does not preserve the agricultural heritage of the city. To quote one of the major values from the current Comprehensive Plan, preserve the agricultural heritage of the city. While I realize, while I realize this particular hearing is not focused on development proposals, I hope this message, if it doesn't sway the decision, will at the very least spur some helpful dialogue between the public and city officials regarding ways to mitigate this and future instances where there is a lack of natural barrier between existing RR lots and redesigned RLM knots, RLM lots. Thank you again for hearing my voice. Sincerely, Matthew Tennis, current own, land owner. For me as well as the current, um, owner who is the process, in the process of buying this home from my current military partner, who's in another state, um, the Comprehensive Plan mentions sustainable and orderly as well. Squeezing three homes mainly in a, in a vertical area is not orderly. There's an easement back there, there's water back there, it simply doesn't make sense. All the homes, majority of the homes on Sleepy Hole Road are acreage homes and single-family homes, and there's three or four subdivisions down Sleepy Hole Road, which makes sense. Trying to make a subdivision, a pseudo-subdivision in this small area, um, is really unsuitable. Sleepy Hole Golf Course, the park, the oversea house, all the historic aesthetics of that area is sound. Future potential taxpayers will enjoy their Sunday drive down Sleepy Hole Road and say, wow, how did they squeeze three homes on this little lot? Sliding a low-density area between two rural residential areas that are currently homesteads and basically pastures with my livestock and the one next door is not optimal. Lastly, I refer you to your emblem, as I look at it for the first time, looking at the farming, looking at the agricultural, that's what you get when you go down Sleepy Hole Road. Three houses put up quickly at two stories is not optimal. This is not a subdivision, like the previous request, this is Sleepy Hole Road. Let's keep Sleepy Hole Road sleepy and a rural residential. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
If not, the proponents, do you have any comments or rebuttal to?
Chaney Cole again, and I certainly appreciate the passion and the comments prior. I respectfully disagree that we're not trying to cram three houses on a very small parcel. We did have a wetlands delineation done by our engineer partners, MSA. We recognize the setbacks in the back. We are going to have lots that are approximately three times the minimum allowable in RLM. The term was quickly constructed and subdivision, I don't think are appropriate for this parcel. We are within the guidelines of both the UDO and the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. Staff has been very careful in their analysis, and we received similar rezoning just up by the golf course about a mile away about a month ago with council. Same setup, three lots, two acres, one entrance, and everybody seemed pleased. And so I'm a little bit caught off-guard because I felt like we were well within and under the guidelines. I think RLM allows for three of the acre, 2.9. We've got 1.6 acres and only three homes, and they will be very nicely constructed homes and not thrown up by any stretch of the imagination. They'll probably be in the $450,000 range, and half-acre lots, I think, are more than appropriate for something like this. I'm not trying to overdo the zoning by any stretch. So thank you for allowing me that extra time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. We're closed to public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments?
I have a question based on the planner, and it relates to the buffer issue in the back, as well as on the side by the fence. So I don't know. As I'm driving Sleepy Hole Road, it would be fencing on the left-hand side. I heard him say that there's a ditch there, and I guess next to the ditch is where they want to put the easement for the driveway for three houses.
So there has been no proposed layout provided to us for the three lots. All of that would be reviewed at the time of developmental plan. We would have to look at it as far as whether or not they would meet dimensional and development standards for the RLM zoning district to allow up to three lots. There was a wetlands delineation provided to us, and as you see on the rezoning exhibit, there is a 100-foot buffer depicted in the rear portion of the property, which they would have to adhere to when they submit for their development review plans. But as I said, we do not have any proposed layouts.
So if they were to adhere to the 100-foot buffer, they don't have a choice. Do they actually still have 1.6 acres to work with?
So the survey that you're seeing, as far as the rezoning exhibit, that actually says 1.5. An updated survey was not actually provided to us, and there is no dimensions along the front portion of the property that tells me what the width of that is. So as far as whether or not they could squeeze the three lots in there, I cannot speak to that. So we would have to look at that at the time of development plan.
But we're asked to vote on it today?
You're asked to vote on the rezoning request for up to three lots. So if they can't meet the dimensional and development standards for three lots, then they would not be granted three lots at the time of minor subdivision.
Up to three lots. Okay, thank you.
I have a question as well. Excuse me. The easement for the, if three lots were approved, the easement, there'll be like one cut or one driveway. Are there any requirements on surfacing of the easement section back to the other, I'd say, two lots behind the first lot? If that's the case, is there any requirement on the developer to pave that driveway?
I am not aware that there is. Traffic could probably speak to that for you. Yes.
No, sir. That would be considered a residential driveway, would not be required to be paved.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners?
Are we on now?
Okay.
I'd like to propose a motion for approval with conditions for the, where are we? RZN 2021-016.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion of the motion.
I just, this just sounds like a pig in a poke. I'm too confused to give this a yes. I'm just, I can't, it's just, I don't see enough. It's around the corner from my house. I've been seeing this lot for years and years and years and years, and I'm 68, and I just cannot see. If we say up to three, then they're going to try to put three, because we said up to three. I just, and there's just too many unknowns for me, and I can't see giving blanket approval when I can't see putting more than one house on that lot. Just sorry.
Okay, so we have a discussion. We're discussing the rezoning at this point, but up to three, but not necessarily three. And the process of the paperwork to determine at a later date how many will be allowed on that property, with the setbacks.
Yeah, I hear you.
Mr. Chairman. In light of the motion, can I ask Mr. Goomers one question?
Sure.
Mr. Goomers, Mr. Cole mentioned that on Sleepy Hole Road, there was a similar approval, I guess, of a rezoning. Was the rezoning, in the case he's speaking of, was it a RR to a RLM on the same road? Or do I need to ask Mr. Cole for clarification?
No, I believe the request he is referring to was around the corner, across the street from the entrance to the golf course. It was a B2 to RLM.
Real quick, was it similar acreage?
Most likely similar. Again, no, the, no plat. The rezoning is simply a rezoning to, for the category of the use and the lot size and so forth.
That's right.
As Ms. Collier pointed out, we have not reviewed a proposed subdivision plat. They would have to meet all of the requirements for frontage and setbacks and so forth. So in this instance, the developer or the applicant has requested and limited the number of lots that could be created to a maximum of three. Once a subdivision plat is submitted, we'll see where that number falls. There's no guarantee that he'll obtain three lots.
One more question for clarification. The RLM zoning is permissible in the suburban use district?
Yes.
And make sure I'm clear, there's also other RLM zoning within the same corridor as well.
Yes.
So RLM is a zoning that's consistent around everywhere around, and I know we're talking about a specific property, but because it is a rezoning, this is really not out of uncharacteristic of what's going on around it. I want to make sure I'm clear with that. And it's also appropriate in this use district.
Correct. And you'll notice again on your land use and zoning exhibit, RLM, the property directly across the street and the property directly behind this subject property is zoned RLM.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, Mr. Goomers, do you call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Everwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler? Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. This will go to City Council on 9/15, September 15, with a motion for approval. The next item on our public hearing is the exception request, CEX 2021-008. Mr. Goomers, will you read the caption, please?
Exception request, CEX 2021-008, 2663 River Watch Drive, submitted by Stacy Brett Rockmore, applicant and property owner, in accordance with Section 31-415 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit a fence to encroach into the 100-foot resource protection area buffer on property located at 2663 River Watch Drive. Zoning map, 26F asterisk RB, Parcel 42. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chucka Tuck Voting Borough, Zone PD, Plan Development Overlay Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exception Request for property located at 2663 River Watch Drive, CEX 2021-008. Brittany Collier will provide staff report. Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. As stated, this exception request is to permit a fence to encroach into the 100-foot resource protection area buffer for property located at 2663 River Watch Drive. The subject property is Zone PD, Plan Development Overlay District, and is a part of the River Bluff subdivision. The lot, being 2,510 square feet in size, was created in 2013 and features a single-family dwelling, which was constructed in 2014, as well as an existing shed. The subject property is located on the tidal waters of the Nansman River, which has a resource protection area buffer. The applicant is requesting an exception to the regulations of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District to encroach into the 100-foot resource protection area buffer for the construction of an aluminum fence approximately 54 inches in height. The proposed fencing will extend a total of 100 linear feet and encroach approximately 20 feet within the 50-foot landward portion of the buffer. The applicant has stated that no portion of the buffer inside or outside of the fenced area will be cleared. The proposed fence is to be installed within a portion of the buffer that is within a maintained grassed area, and the fence shall be installed so that it does not inhibit or alter surface flow. The installation of the fence will result in land disturbance for the installation of the fence posts. The applicant has submitted a buffer restoration plan to mitigate for the full limit of disturbance, which shows the installation of various types of vegetation, which includes shrubs and trees. To mitigate for the proposed land disturbance, the applicant is proposing to place one unit of vegetation back within the buffer. The vegetation proposed is consistent with the Riparian Buffer Modification and Mitigation Manual. Section 31-415, subsection 5F of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District provides review criteria when reviewing exception requests. I will touch base on a few of those review criteria, however, each one is addressed in staff's report. The exception request is the minimum necessary to afford relief. Due to the location of the buffer line, existing structures, and extensive landscaping, the fence would not be able to be kept outside of the buffer. The proposed fence is to be placed within a maintained grass area within the backyard. No vegetation is proposed to be removed, and portions of the fence will be kept outside of the buffer where able. Reasonable and appropriate conditions are imposed, which will prevent the exception request from causing a degradation of water quality. Fences typically do not have significant areas of impervious surface, and therefore, if designed appropriately, do not impact water quality functions of vegetated buffers. Staff has placed a condition that the fence shall be installed so that it does not inhibit or alter surface flow. Lastly, staff finds that the applicant's request does satisfy the criteria outlined in Section 31-415, subsection F5C of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Overlay District. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions of exception request, CEX 2021-008. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. Now open the public hearing. Is anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this exception request?
Hello. We're the homeowners at River Watch Drive, the property that we're discussing here. And?
Your name?
Oh, my name's Jackie Rockmore, and my husband Brett Rockmore. We've recently moved there, and we wanted to thank Brittany for her efforts and support. And we just wanted to, you know, confirm that we understand the importance of being good stewards of this property that's adjacent to the river. It's our intention. We've selected a type of fencing that the installation won't involve any digging, and so therefore will minimize the soil disturbance. If we're asked to relocate the proposed location outside of the buffer zone, it will involve extensive landscape adjustment in the area adjacent, which would result in a great deal of soil disturbance, and I think would sort of go against the spirit of what we're all working towards here. So we're happy and enthusiastic to add these native woody vegetation to our space, and, you know, we'll do that both in the proposed locations and then in areas further back towards the house, because we understand it's the right thing to do, and, you know, we appreciate the value of the native vegetation and the soil retention.
Thank you, Ms. Rockmore. Is anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Hi, my name is Cindy O'Byrne. I'm their neighbor, literally right next door to them at 2659 River Watch Drive, and I know they've just recently moved in, and they want to put a fence, and they've worked very hard to make sure that they're not disturbing the RPA with their fence. They're making adjustments to go out of the way to, like she said, not disturb the soil, and I'm their neighbor, and I totally approve of what they're doing and have no problems with it whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrnes. Anyone else to speak in favor? Is anyone to speak in opposition? If not, we're closed to public hearing. Commissioners, comments, questions, motion? We have a motion for approval from Commissioner Hicks.
Second.
Discussion of the motion. Ms. Edwards?
I'd just like to make one comment. I want to thank the neighbor for coming out and showing support and clarifying that the new homeowners are doing their best to make sure everything flows in with the RPA. I would just like to make a comment. We call these exceptional requests, but they're starting to become the rule, because we're doing a lot of these all the time. And, but I do appreciate the neighbor coming out and speaking. So I'm on the fence, because I guess you all know how I usually vote on these, but the neighbor has softened my heart, so we'll see in a minute. I just want to make that comment on the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Any other comments? Mr. Goomers, will you call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Everwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Goomers. There's, Rockmore, I'm probably messing your name up, but congratulations, there'll be no further action required for this request. We were now closed to public hearing, and we'll move to old business. and we'll move to old business. We have one item that was left over that we tabled last month, Condition Use Permit Request, C U P twenty twenty-one dash zero one four, Bennett's Creek Common. And, Mr. Goomins, will you give us an update, please?
Yes, sir. This is Conditional Use Permit Request, C U P twenty twenty-one dash zero one four, Bennett's Creek Commons, submitted by Chris Stubbs, Haggard Year Associate's P C agent on behalf of Sam Cohen, Bennett's Creek Commons LLC applicant and property owner, in accordance with Section thirty-one three oh six and thirty-one four oh six of the Unified Development Ordinance, in order to amend the previously approved conditions pertaining to the establishment of a multifamily garden apartment complex on property located at thirty-three fifty-one Bridge Road and thirty-three fifty-three Bridge Road, zoning map twelve parcels thirty-four C and thirty-four C asterisk one, or three. The purpose of this request is to increase the size and number of residential dwelling units with the establishment of additional dwellings, garden apartment pertaining to the development of Bennett's Creek Commons, C twenty dash thirteen. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, Zone B one Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. The twenty thirty-five Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Inner Ring Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to Conditional Use Permit, C U P twenty twenty-one dash zero one four. Kevin Wong will provide the update.
All right. Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman. I'll be brief this time, just provide you with an update. But as you recall, a public hearing was held for this item at your meeting on July twentieth. After the public hearing was closed, the Planning Commission, by a vote of six to two, tabled consideration of this item for thirty days to allow for the most recent traffic count numbers to be provided for this section of Bridge Road. Consequently, the city's Traffic Engineering Division collected traffic counts along this section of Bridge Road between July twenty-sixth and August first, where an average daily volume of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and eight vehicles was observed. Attached to staff's reports and the cover memo, there was a memo dated August eleventh, which further detailed Traffic Engineering's findings. As a reminder, this request is a proposal to amend an existing Conditional Use Permit to allow for the development of forty additional garden apartment units on the property. And presently, there are a hundred and forty-four garden apartment dwellings, which have been approved for the site. The additional forty would bring the total permitted dwellings on the property to a hundred and eighty-four. Staff continues to recommend denial of this due to compliance issues with guidance within the Comprehensive Plan and the U D O. But that concludes my comments. Thank you, sir.
This item was closed last month. Commissioners, do you have a discussion of the motion? Discussion or a motion or questions from the staff report that we received on the traffic report?
Mr. Chairman, the only question I had on this was, and I understand where staff has recommended denial of this, in terms of generating twenty-five point three units per acre, which exceeds the recommended range of six to twelve units per acre. If you go out that way, you'll see the other development, which apartments and that sort of thing, which this will be adjacent, immediately adjacent to it. You know, and I know that some years ago, that particular development came before this group and also was approved by the City Council. I think that, my feeling is that the original, I think the original proposal was for a convenience store or office-type thing in place of these garden apartments. From my perspective, and I travel that way a lot, I'd rather have the apartments there rather than another convenience store. You got two Seven Elevens that are right down the street, one across the street from one another. And it does, that creates a lot more traffic than apartments would. So I would be voting for it. For approval, not for denial. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I second it.
We got a second from Commissioner Hicks. Discussion of the motion?
Go ahead, Mr. Edwards.
No, go ahead.
I'd just like to thank Traffic and Engineering. When we requested this traffic count, they were out there within a day or two. So anyway, just, again, thank you for being so prompt in what you did. I appreciate it.
Mr. Edwards?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the floor. First of all, I want to thank Commissioner Everwine for asking for the traffic study. It gave us all time to really think about this issue for thirty more days, and it gave us good information. Thank you, Mr. Cohen, for submitting this application. I went out to the property, and it is beautiful. You know, I loved the area, and I sat out in the parking lot. I saw the commercial area in the back. I saw the apartments on the left, and I saw the open space in the middle, I guess, where this new apartments would go. What has really confused me is, first of all, this is not a rezoning. This is a Conditional Use Permit. So we do have some flexibility, yeah and eight. And we're asking for an exception to allow more apartments on the area where we already allowed a hundred and forty-four next door, and just keep on going. Again, this is a Conditional Use Permit, not a rezoning. So because of that, my main problem, and this is just my personal opinion, is we have this sticky thing called the Comprehensive Plan that's really in the way. This is in the Inner Ring Use District. And I would be more prone to support the Conditional Use if we were further east, more towards the Course of Port down Bridge Road. But in this case, we're further west, going toward the suburban district. And because we're going more toward the suburban use district, I don't think that's consistent with how the Comprehensive Plan flows. So even if we was in the ring, I mean, yes, inner ring, and we was going more toward Course of Port with the Conditional Use, I would feel more confident, because it's more transitional. I think going further west towards suburban kind of makes this staggered and uncharacteristic of the transition of what we're trying to do. And for that reason, and for that reason only, is the reason why I would not support this application. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a discussion? Mr. Goomins, will you call the vote, please?
So, yes is no, or no is yes?
The motion is for approval.
For approval, okay. Okay.
Maybe, hold, maybe I need to get counsel. The original... One more time.
Yeah, yes means yes this time.
If it's for approval, yes means yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm usually on the other side of the fence. I'm on the... Mr. Goomins, you call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Everwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
No.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor? Motion passes by a vote of seven to one, with Commissioner Edwards voting in opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Goomins. This motion, Condition Use Permit, will go to City Council on September fifteenth with the motion for approval. That concludes the old business. Do we have any new business? We have some new business. Mr. Goomins will give us a status report of City Council and preliminary plat approvals, if you have any.
Yes, sir. This is the actions taken by the City Council at their July twenty-first meeting. Rezoning Request, R Z N twenty twenty-one dash zero zero seven. This was the Murphy's Mill Tinplex. That proposal was approved, rezoning request was approved with the proffers accepted. The rezoning Request, R Z N twenty twenty-one dash eleven, conditional. This was Meadows Landing Phase Three. That was tabled for an additional thirty days. Conditional Use Permit Request, C U P twenty twenty dash zero one five. This is the Bridge Road Family Life Center at the Servant Funeral Home. That was approved with the amended conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission. Conditional Use Permit Request, C U P twenty twenty-one dash zero zero nine. This is the Holland Road Solar Facility. That was approved with conditions. Conditional Use Permit Request, C U P twenty twenty-one dash zero one two, Crocker Funeral Home Expansion. That also was approved with conditions. Subdivision Variance Request, S B V twenty twenty-one dash zero zero two, Godwin Park Phase One. That was approved with the conditions as presented. And then Ordinance Text Amendment, O T A twenty twenty dash zero zero one. These were all the text amendments associated with new sign regulations. Those were approved as presented with modifications. They accepted the modifications approved by this body, as well as some other modifications. With regards to preliminary subdivision plat approval, we've recently had two preliminary plats approved. The first one was preliminary subdivision plat, P S B twenty nineteen dash zero zero four for Meadows, the Meadows at Moore's Point. This is a proposed A three lot, single-family residential subdivision along C Street. That was approved. And then also preliminary subdivision plat, twenty twenty-one dash zero zero one, River Club, for a proposed residential development of three hundred and seventy-seven single-family residential lots, and that was approved.
Mr. Chairman? This is really a question for maybe legal counsel, or Bob, one. Over the last several months, even years, we've had seemingly a substantial number of requests for solar farms. We've had debate within this body about the approvals, where they should be, where they should not be, et cetera. And I think, if I remember correctly, that's kind of extended to City Council. That's had some considerable issue with the location and the requirements for the solar farms. I know that we have made some changes to the vegetation requirements, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate for the Planning Commission to maybe review the ordinance, the U D O, dealing with solar farm approval, locations, the entire thing, to maybe try to come up with something that would give the developers of the solar farms a better idea of exactly where we think they ought to be and maybe where we don't think they ought to be. Would it be appropriate for us to request or to have the Ordinance Committee do a thorough review with the, obviously, support of the Planning Department of that entire ordinance dealing with solar farms? Is that something can be originated here?
So the zoning ordinance can be amended, can be initiated?
One of three ways. From City Council, a resolution from City Council, by members of the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission would have a motion and a vote, or by an application by a property owner. So you would fall into the second category. If the body agreed that they would like to review a portion or make an amendment to a portion of the zoning ordinance, then the Planning Commission may initiate zoning ordinance amendments. And those would be recommendations that are passed on to City Council for City Council to ultimately approve.
Thank you. Well, that being said, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission send to the Ordinance Committee of this body a review of the, all the U D O ordinances and provisions that are concerning solar farms. Would that be appropriate, or would I need to add to that, sir?
I think that would be appropriate as long as the other planning commissioners are clear.
Right, right. That's my motion. Thank you.
I second that motion, and I'd like to speak under discussion.
Department, rather than sending it to council, for council to request it.
That's correct. Council does not need to request. The Planning Commission can initiate changes to the zoning ordinance.
And when it comes back from ordinance, it comes back to us, then we send it to council?
After you have a public hearing and a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to be overly bureaucratic, I would suggest two actions. First, the proposed text amendment are consideration, and then a follow-up motion presuming that was approved. A follow-up motion to forward from this body to, excuse me, to the Committee on Ordinances for a recommendation to this body concerning that.
So the first motion is going to be...
So that means we wouldn't need this motion?
Strictly text to the Ordinance Committee.
Correct. The first motion that Mr. Staylor is making is to provide a report and possible ordinance text amendment for, that this body needs to initiate. And then to get it on that track, to send it, just like any other consideration, to the Committee on Ordinances for their review and recommendation to this body, who would then take it from there. Just as we do with any other text amendment.
That's the form of my motion. In the form of my second.
Can we have a voice vote on that?
Under discussion, though. I'd just like to make it be, I just think we need to say it. These solar farm requests come up, and the planners work diligently to bring them to us, and they follow the letter of what we currently have in place. And then, as commissioners, we get to say, but no, we don't want it there. So I really, you were in my head, because that's what I was thinking about this morning. We need to talk about, at some point, these solar farms, because they make money and they help our broadband, so we got to have them. So I'm just, I'm glad that, you know, you were in my head today, and I support you wholeheartedly.
Okay, Mr. Goomins, call the roll. We take a voice vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Now you make the second motion, sir.
Second motion is that we turn this over to the Committee on Ordinances for review, along with the Planning Department staff.
Second.
You got a second, okay. Any discussion? Edwards with a voice vote. All in favor? You got all that, Mr. Goomins?
Yes, sir.
Being there's no other discussion?
Oh, I actually have a comment. I would be remiss, having said this publicly, but I want to congratulate Mr. William Hutcherson on being appointed as city attorney. I hadn't taken that time yet to have him get into you. And also, I want to congratulate Mr. Almwood on being appointed as the city manager. Both of them great assets of the city itself, and I just want to publicly thank you for all you do. So thank you.
And as an addendum to that, I'd just like to say that, we say it on occasion, but the city staff and the Planning Department, you guys do one tremendous job. The amount of detail that you provide... The amount of detail that you provide for us for every one of our meetings is greatly appreciated, so I just wanted to say that to each and every one of you, including Mr. Goomis right there. Thank you so much.
Seeing no other comments, this meeting is adjourned.